All rise and say in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, go on, please silence your cell phones for us. We don't hear them going off in the middle of the meeting. Meeting details have been placed on the agenda to allow council members, staff, and the public to participate in the meeting via teleconference. Pursuit of the governor's executive order N 2920 will be limited access, public access to the council chambers. Members of the audience, the public may also remotely listen to participate in the meeting via teleconference. If you wish to listen or participate in this meeting, teleconference, simply dial the conference number listed below. During the call, you may press star nine to raise your hand to ask to speak with the meeting. Speakers will be asked to identify themselves. Public comment, this is a time for public comments. Council may ask questions, but may take no action during the public comment section of this meeting except to direct staff to prepare or place it on a future agenda item. If you're here to make a comment on a specific agenda item, you may speak at that time. If not, this is the time, please limit your remarks to five minutes. Speakers, please speak from the podium, state your name and address, mail an address to the city staff and respond in regards to your comments or provide with information if appropriate. You are not required to state your name and address, desire to do so. All right, this is time for public comments, what do we got out here?
My name is Jenny O'Gorman, I've lived in the city of Ocon for over years, I currently do not live in the city. But I am concerned about the free needle program exchange. I would like to see the city basically write an ordinance or pass an ordinance that does not allow the needle exchange of free needles, but I don't want to see needles in our parks, on the streets. Pretty much that's what, I think that's what I want to say about that. The second thing I'd like to speak to is the homeless shelter. And I, after listening to Dwayne at the Patriots meeting the other night, I understand that the city is hands are tied by the state. And I think it's a good idea that we have a place for the homeless to go. I do have a question, you can answer it later. Is there going to be a fence around the property that you are designating as the homeless shelter? And, and I don't want to speak, the location, I think it's good that it's near somebody that can help, like Beacon Hope. I don't want to speak to the citizens that live close to that area, I think they need to speak on that. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
The homeless shelter, the homeless shelter is not ours, I'm speaking of Hope, as long as she's aware of that, we would not speak to that.
Yeah. Yeah.
She knows that the shelter and the shelter is different.
Yeah, she knows we're talking about urban camps.
My name is Don Marie Autry. I'm here because I'm really upset that the fireworks issue did not get put on the agenda. After I discussed with, you know, German Hope about this. It's, you know, we're in a really bad drought. And we're gonna whine about people watering stuff, yet we're gonna let people blow up fireworks. I just want them not being sold in the city where we live. You know, we are, they've already started with deploying their fireworks, we know. But we don't have to help, dumpster is not, Mount Chesapeake is not, weed is not. And yet, we don't even get to have it put on the bill, I mean, put on the agenda. You know, what, what, what is going on there? You know, are the pockets so deep in the Elks Club that, that we ignore people's homes? Because we can become a paradise in five seconds. You know, I'm seriously thinking that you guys aren't paying attention. You know, please, please pay attention.
All right, is there any other public comment? Then, is it number six that we're talking about, Steve on even? Is it number twelve? Number twelve, okay. Okay, so if laws of the commission with the council, I'd like to move number twelve up to number one. Just be that part of the law. Person on the other end, so they can get done with their evening. Is that okay with the council? Yes.
I'm fine with it.
All right, we'll move on to number twelve then. Discussion possible action financing agreement for wastewater revenue bonds. Adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Warrick approving the form of a and authorizing and directing execution of delivery of a financing agreement providing for the insurance of series twenty twenty-one wastewater revenue bond anticipation notes for the interim financing of the Main Street Sewer Interceptor Improvement Project and providing for other matters properly related thereto. And we want to start off with Rheta.
Excuse me, um, with the information about financing for the I-3 sewer project. And how, uh, tonight was this county, our home council, and what we're introducing tonight is a resolution to enter into an agreement to enter into what they call SANS or participation notes. And that's going to be lasting for about three years. As you may recall from the beginning of this project, it's USDA has not been the interim financing, that's kind of a little bit changed. And they require us to find that they are intermediary to provide construction financing. So this is commonly called, I've heard it as bridge loads or construction financing or, or some other regions like that. Last summer, we did RFP for those who, the lenders that participate in these kind of structured financing and received a solicited, um, received a response from Banner Bank, a bank that does business locally. And so we can enter into our, our relationship or looking to enter into a relationship with Banner Bank for the interim finances. We also contacted other local banks who did not, do not do this arrangement. It's very specific with USDA. And with that, if I can turn it over to Cameron, maybe to speak a little bit about that and then answer any questions, but tonight we approve the resolution to entering into the agreement. And then also you have the pro forma of basically the revenue, or the revenue anticipation monitor, bank anticipation notes. So, that, right there? I think we're having a little bit of audio on your end, try again.
Oh my, Donald Duck.
Did you have questions, maybe ones that you'd like to ask of me, or if I can answer it, Karen might come back in.
Actually, it's not the first time we've reviewed this, so it's pretty streamlined, especially. I'm good.
All right, well, this is a big part, one of the part parcel that's going out for the, is that you have actually financing for that construction. And so this is kind of where we partner up with the top works to make sure that the money's in place for this project. And Cameron, you maybe?
That might, how am I now, can you hear me now? I lost my Donald Duck voice, huh?
That's kind of cool though.
Yeah, that's, that makes for a better meeting, I think, a little more laughter. So Rheta, I, I'm sorry if I missed anything that you had said while I was absent here, but yeah, I just wanted to echo your sentiments that tonight, you know, the council's really just considering the, the legal document is what this meeting, what this item is all about, and the legal document being a financing agreement. And as you said, Rheta, this is a three-year agreement for a financing that is a term financing, meaning that there is no interest payable during the term. I'm sorry, there is no principal payment during the term, it's interest only. And it's prepayable at any time after twenty-four months, I think that's important. So the bank wants to see that it gets some compensation back on the return of its, its investment here. This is not something that's unusual, this is very typical with short-term financings in the municipal marketplace, the banks typically try to have some sort of lockout period. Your project, as I understand, is going to take at least eighteen months for construction, sixteen, eighteen months. So while that is a negotiable point, right now, the way their term sheet is written, it is twenty-four months non-prepayable. After that, it's prepayable at par without penalty. And the remedies are essentially that they are looking for the USDA financing as their takeout remedy. However, if anything were to slip and payments were not to be made, they would have the right to, to what's called net revenues. They can't take the system or any part of the system, but they're going to, they could come back and say, now you owe us on an ongoing basis from net revenues. Net revenues is your overall revenues of the enterprise, the wastewater price, less the maintenance and operation expenses. And so that would be their sole remedy in the event that this USDA pulled out and they were left holding the bag on this. And I think other than that, Rheta, I believe you've covered it all, so if there are, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions from the council? First time, sounds good. We're ready for this, and we need to be ready for this, that's why this is coming forth. Be prepared. All righty. Yep, absolutely. Well, does anybody want to introduce a motion?
I will make a motion, this is Debbie Barrett, I will make a motion that we adopt a resolution of the city council. The city of Warrick approving the form and authorization and direction and directing execution and delivery of a financing agreement providing for the issuance of series twenty twenty-one wastewater revenue bond. Anticipation notes for the interim financing of the Main Street Sewer Interceptor Improvement Project and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Councilman Milton, I'll second.
We should, in a second.
Very good, Mayor Pretend Barrett. City Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
City Councilmember McCoy.
Aye.
City Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Rheta. Thank you, Cameron.
Thank you, have a nice meeting, good night.
All righty, then now we'll jump back to number one, discussion possible action consent calendar, all matters under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion unless the member, any member of the council wishes to remove it, any item for discussion or a member of the audience wishes to comment on the item. The city manager recommends approval of the following consent calendared items. A, approval, ratification of payments issued from May tenth, twenty twenty-one through May twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. B, approval of minutes of a meeting held on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. C, continuation of the urgency of ordinance number eight fifty-five. D, adopt a resolution approving a list of projects for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two funded by S D Warren, the Road Repair and Accountability Act. And E, waive full tax readings on all ordinance on the agenda, ordinance shall be introduced and adopted by title only.
I'd like to, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item number one B for, for some additions on the minutes. That I would make a motion that we approve items A, C, D, and E.
Moving, moving one B, okay, A, A, C, D, and E, correct?
Which item is being removed? C and Y is item C being removed, C or B, Madam Councilman?
Not C, I just said when I said please remove it because something was left out of the minutes that I would like included.
One B.
It was a motion that I made that isn't.
B or C?
B, I'm sorry, B, one B.
He is a boy, because something was left out of the minutes.
Can we add it to the minutes now and, and then just pass it?
That's why I'm removing it, so that we can add it.
So she's already done a motion, so we can just.
All second.
In a second, okay.
Yes, please. Call, call, call for question, we just said we're going to remove it so we can add it. I said, are we going to add it, you said, Councilwoman, Madam Council, we're going to add it. You've called for the, the roll call vote, we haven't added it, can, can we have an explanation on that? I'm asking the mayor right now.
She just, she just pulled it from that, so we're just going to, she already made a motion for one, A, C, D, and E. And so she already made the motion, so we're going to approve that first, or maybe we'll prove it. And then we'll do one B on.
And what are we changing on one B?
Well, she's going to let us know after we do the roll call on that, sorry. Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Pretend Barrett. City Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
City Councilmember McCoy.
Aye.
City Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Aye, all right, now one B.
Yeah, this is a very, very simple, but that was important to me because I had made the motion. And as I said, this is on page one of four of the minutes. And it's on item two. And you'll see on there that Councilmember Freeman removed item two A from the consent calendar. And then Councilmember McCoy moved to approve the rest of the items. Yes, with the exception of two A. So then what's left out is then after we approved all the rest of them, then I went back after my question was answered. We went back after question was answered, Councilmember Freeman, and I think Councilmember McCoy seconded, I'm not sure. Anyway, made the motion to approve two A. That was the only thing that was left out, so I'd like to add that to the minutes.
Job done.
Because otherwise, it looks like everything was approved but that, but I did make the motion to approve.
So we have that recognized as a change.
So I would make a motion to include that in the minutes.
Thank you.
That's Freeman and McCoy seconded.
On the last thing on two A.
Remember?
Okay, so we have a motion now to approve it with the, with the tweaks to it.
We're going to call that correction.
Okay, we have a second by anybody?
I'll second.
Yes, please.
Mayor Pretend Barrett.
Aye.
City Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
City Councilmember McCoy.
Aye.
City Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Kay.
Aye, all right. Correction? Hopefully it'll be corrected on this next one, so we'll, next, another next city council meeting. All right, number two, discussion possible action zoning code amendment, mobile units, introduce ordinance number eight sixty-two of amending section sixteen point forty-six point zero eight zero of chapter sixteen point forty-six of title sixteen of the Warrick Municipal Code entitled Sales From Vehicles, Traders, or Mobile Units on Private or Public Property. The finding that ordinance is exempt from CEQA. All right, Liz.
Mayor Kay, members of the council, I have two ordinances before you tonight. We've been working on these forever, and thank goodness Dawn had the time to put them in, so as you know, the city attorney has to write the ordinances. So he tweaked our language a little bit. So I'm happy to bring these two, I will start with the number two, which is the bending ordinance. I'm hoping everybody had a chance to read it, I might add that Councilmember McCoy has also been raised up, he was on the planning mission when we started these. What we're, the intention of this ordinance is to bring our code up to our current practice. Any of you who've seen one selling down at Rory's, he's there longer than two hours. But it just works out, so we just want to clean up this vendor's ordinance and get it clarified, so when somebody comes in, we'll say, you know, code says this, but we let you use this. And you can use a parking lot only if you don't use the existing parking spaces required for a business. It sometimes gets a little sticky down at Rory's, we get complaints, but this will clean it up, so our ordinance matches our policy.
No, that just makes sense that it cleaned up, so everybody's being on the legal side.
And you notice we added in something, especially with Dawn's help, it's the sales on city streets or sidewalks, we're requiring or stating that you can only sell on a sidewalk, it's ten feet wide. We've only got a couple of those, and the reason for that is ADA, you can't block a sidewalk. And there are exceptions where the council can grant exceptions if there's, there's an event, they get a special certificate or a resolution for the council, but they have to come and specifically ask for that.
As soon as, as soon as the Main Street gets changed, we're going to probably have some more bigger sidewalks.
And, and are we, are we the owners of the sidewalks?
Yeah.
That's what the attorney said, that's what they'll kick in whether we're the owner or not.
Yes.
This specifically says sidewalks we own, but I've been told those are going to be twenty feet wide.
I know.
It's like in the city.
Yeah.
Up to twenty-two feet.
The new ones. On Main Street, yeah.
Dawn, Dawn Marie, go ahead.
Um, is this going to affect the east roads and whatnot, you know, the, the restaurants and stuff on Meyer Street? You plan on, you know, putting their.
For special events, they've always been able to, and they will continue to be allowed to do so, because the council will give them permission for a specific date and time.
Yeah, I mean, like, Zepres right now, they have a table on.
They've got room, they're one of the few places, they've got an ALCO. So in the Akkules building, that'd be a great place if somebody was there, they could. Most places don't have the room for a table, chair, and to let a wheelchair get by.
Yeah, I just thought as a technicality.
Great.
Questions, if not, I would really appreciate you introducing this ordinance.
I'll make a motion, if I may, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make the recommended and requested action that city council introduce ordinance number eight sixty-two, amending section sixteen point four six point zero eight zero of sixteen point four six of title sixteen of the Warrick Municipal Code entitled Sales From Vehicles, Trailers, or Mobile Units on Private or on Public Property and finding that this ordinance is exempt from CEQA.
Councilmember McCoy will second that.
All right, great, thank you, Paul. All righty, roll call, Mr. Baker, please.
Mayor Pretend Barrett.
Aye.
City Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
Aye.
City Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Aye, all right, one down, one more to go. Number three, discussion possible actions, zoning code amendment, fence height, introduce ordinance numbers eight sixty-three, amending section sixteen point forty-six point zero five zero of chapter sixteen forty-six of the title sixteen of the Warrick Municipal Code relating to fencing, walls, hedges, and screen planting, and finding that the ordinance is exempt from CEQA. All right, Liz again.
Okay, this one was about as fun as a.
Yeah.
When you look at all the different angles, there are so many. I don't know if any of you, I'm sure all of you read it and have memorized it, so. Anybody who reads current ordinance, it's confusing at best. People are building, even when they read it, they build thinking it's okay. It's just very confusing. So we were, we took an attempt, this first bilateral, to make it a little bit more clear to read. And assuming we adopt this ordinance, our next step will be education. We, we contact all the people who beat, who sell fences, but there are people who build their own, if they don't know. My neighbor Joe next door's got a six-foot, eight-foot fence in the front yard, why can't that? So, but we, we talked, we, you'll see, this is a sixth draft, we talked this one to Dan.
Yeah.
Ran it by other planners and the city attorney, and basically came up with, we can't really do anything with the existing ones that are in good repair, if they're in good repair, you're just going to have to let it go. But once they're either damaged or removed, you'll have to conform to our code. We put a section in there, we're trying to decide, say a car runs through Joan's fence and she wants to replace it, but it's eight feet, we hate it. Well, if they've damaged thirty percent or less, she can put it up, but if it's more than thirty percent, then she's going to have to bring that wonderful fence down and.
My fence is only four foot.
So we, it, it's probably not perfect, but this will at least get our foot in the door, we'll get started, we'll start code enforcement going, and education, so that everybody knows. Because people spend a lot of money, there's a gorgeous one that kind of brought this to a head. It's a wrought iron six-foot fence, and it's absolutely gorgeous, he's paying a lot of money. And for us to say, oh no, you gotta take that down.
Yeah.
It just, it doesn't feel right to me.
Absolutely.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is something that the planning commissioner was dealing with when I was on it, and that's been over, that's been three years, we probably dealt with it for a year while I was on there, so.
Yeah, and we couldn't, we were stuck on what to do with the existing one, we're going to make them come in before us and pay and get a permit and.
We didn't want to penalize.
So is this going to go out like, you know, water bills and stuff like that?
That's probably where we'll start, I'll talk right into putting it in the newspaper, the newsletter. Yeah, and slowly, we'll just try to educate, make it happen.
And then, like you said, are you saying contacted the fencing outfits, or are you sending out some?
We have before.
Oh, yeah.
And, but you know what, if they called you to save me, you know, I, I want this fence, you put it, you're making money, you're going to put it up, you know the code says, but city's not coming after you, they're not coming after them, what's the harm?
Well, as a contractor, though, you still have to do.
Most contractors would, you would think.
You would think, they, they should.
Yeah, but it just doesn't always work out that way. And again, our ordinance is very confusing. It's a little tiny one, but it's full of it.
Well, I just, thank you for all the work on this. Yes.
He even came to our latest planning commission meeting to help us get this through. And of course, big thanks to Dawn, I don't know if he's on the phone, but he made time to, to get this in.
All right. All you want to motion?
I'll make the motion for, this is Councilmember McCoy, I'll make the motion to introduce ordinance number eight sixty-three, amending section sixteen point four six point zero five zero of chapter sixteen point four six of title sixteen of the Warrick Municipal Code relating to fencing, walls, hedges, and screen planting, and finding that this ordinance is exempt from CEQA.
Councilman Milton, I will second the motion.
Motion is second, Mr. Baker, please.
Mayor Pretend Barrett.
Aye.
City Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
City Councilmember McCoy.
Aye.
City Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you, Liz.
Thank you very much, as required on all zoning codes, you have to bring this back to your public hearing, so we'll schedule it for your next meeting, Steve's last, we'll let him do this. And hopefully we get it announced, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number four, discussion possible action, community theater HVAC that the council recommended inclusion of the capital outlaw, outlay. Two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in the city's FY twenty-two budget for the community theater HVAC project. Cindy.
Hello. Evening, Mr. Mayor, and as a council. Um, as you know, this is a project that's been on hold for a bit. Um, in twenty eighteen, the project was put out to bid, and both bids were unresponsive, it's errors. At that time, project was taken back to pace to have better detailed drawings and bid specs put out. Project updated, and the cost was also updated substantially, the window cost them a lot more, closer to twenty thousand dollars. So at that time, the project was put on hold until a decision could be made regarding whether we wanted to report it or not. And this has recently been brought to the finance committee, and they have discussed the project and recommended using capital reserve funds to complete the project, and it's now being brought before council to await your pleasure.
We have some questions, I'm sure there's going to be some questions on this one.
No, we can mention on this one.
Is there another one we've worked on?
Is there another one we've worked on?
Yes.
Yeah, and I think as long as I've been on here, it's been, it's been a no-go for whatever reason. The three years I've been on council, it's been a no-go. When finance committee discussed, I think honestly, we have two options. One is to fix it, the other is just let the building go to hell, which it already, it's already going to hell.
Yeah.
Um, and just demolish it or do something with it and use it probably for something else. So the finance committee thought it was wisest to go ahead and put American District in there. I know after talking to Renee Crane or an HVAC system, I've talked to Renee Crane during our tour, she said, you know, if you guys would have had an HVAC system in there, we would have used it for, for the courtrooms.
Okay.
Uh, she said, she said you were the only one that, that, that we would have used except for perhaps one out of the fairgrounds, but she said nobody had that. So I think it's, I think it's, plus, I mean, I, I would hope it will be used again. I mean, there are many, many cities that are our size that don't have a theater that's as nice as ours, even in the condition that it's in right now.
Yeah, it's a nice facility. We've been missing out, especially, well, this last year, of course, with everything going on. But still, it'd be nice to have events there again, to see the, all the plays, all the everything going on. The high school will be able to use it.
For sure.
It's just a valuable asset to the community all the way around, so.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm a big believer in the community theater and I think that, and all in our group. The finance committee discussed this at length and we believe that this is the best thing to do to protect our building. That and we'll, we'll talk about it some other time. But I just want to add two words to it where it says that capital outlay of two hundred and thirty thousand. I'd like to add up to two hundred and thirty thousand. And I'd be happy to make the motion unless someone else wants to talk.
Well, where does the two hundred and thirty thousand go, come from?
Capital reserve.
No, no, no. The.
The bid price?
Where does the bid price come from?
It's engineering.
Pace was two twenty-three.
And when was, and when was that bid done?
It was, it was done in twenty nineteen and it was recently updated last month to be about two hundred and twenty.
Twenty-three?
Two twenty-three. And we added another seven thousand just for admin and to cover.
That's why.
We're not expecting it to be.
So that's, that's, that's more recent than Cindy. Thank you, thank you very much.
Up to, yeah.
Up to two hundred and thirty thousand.
So, so just for clarification, this particular item is going to end up in the twenty-one twenty-two list. So it'll be a number that says two hundred and thirty thousand, which is split into two parts in terms of the estimate. One is the work and the other is doing all the stuff with the grid backlist. So it'll just show up as a.
So it has to be approved again.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah.
What we wanted to do is that this is one that partially because
the council wasn't in a position to allocate funds. We wanted to bring this back, we were asking for it back as you may recall this meeting. So we wanted to get your formal approval to put this amount in the budget so that we know they can prove it with, for granted.
Something we need to do, so I set up two, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, so if that's a motion.
I'll make the motion that council recommend inclusion in capital outlays up to two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in the city's FY twenty-one twenty-two budget for the community theater HVAC project.
We have a motion, Councilwoman Littleton will second.
Motion second, Mr. Baker, please.
Mayor Pretender.
Hi.
City Councilmember Freeman.
Hi.
City Councilmember Quill.
Hi.
City Councilmember Littleton.
Hi.
Mayor Baker.
Hi, alrighty, thank you, thank you Cindy.
Mr. Mayor, yes, may I ask this question of Rheta?
Yes, please.
Rheta, would this qualify for ARPA, for reimbursement from ARPA monies? With the state, in other words, in other words, if we use this money, could we then ask the state in their infinite wisdom to give us back the amount of money?
Well, we're looking at stuff that's coming down. I don't see that yet.
Okay.
I think there's going to be a lot more appropriations still coming down, so I think a lot of us are reading that. With that in our mind.
It would be nice.
I was reading along with some public initiatives that might be in it, but.
Based on my reading, I would say the answer is probably not.
Okay.
We should wait until we see it.
Thank you.
Also mentioned, because you brought up, that also is probably true in the homeless coordinator. Probably not.
For the audience here, ARPA is what's known as the American Rescue Plan Act. That was out soon.
Congress, the president's way of helping us out.
Yes, I guess we're on to number five then. A discussion possible action, code enforcement abatement activities. This, the city council approved a supplemental appropriation of hundred thousand dollars for nuisance abatement that will cross fiscal years twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one and yeah, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, you're right here, yeah. For abatement activities in a special purpose fund titled nuisance abatement where the city expects to recover costs through remedies outlined in the Wayrica Municipal Code section one point one zero point one zero one zero dash one point one five dot point zero three zero. There we go. And if you. Yeah, somebody else is going to have to prove that one, so.
So, and we were met with the finance committee and kind of talked about the statement activities with Will and Chief Gilman. And I've got some, you know, kind of what is the order of things? And I think really kind of the sticking point is the appropriation right now for them to kind of keep moving forward. And kind of going back and reviewing, it had been a while on the Wayrica Municipal Code and kind of how to set this up. I think a special, special purpose fund, just to seed it with a hundred thousand and start aggregating the cost related to these property abatements, such as cleanups or whatever. And then when they kind of get the cost of the property base, they'll come back to the cost report as outlined in the municipal code on these properties. And then we have a couple of options for remedies or remediation on those through, through links or cat links to recover those expenses. So the cleanest way for us is just kind of to see the account of a hundred thousand in cash and then a balance to kind of spend. And we'll cross kind of both fiscal years because they kind of do keep going right away. And urgency was clearly one thing that they need with, with the court time. So I think this would be a great way to set it up. I think it makes tracking. We can use project codes for each property by AP and whatever kind of the easy screen for tracking on it. So what we'll do is just kind of move from reserves into the specials. And start starting these properties on cleanup and that way, you know, it's in my sense, it's a different track. The cost accounting, what would be the cost accounting, so we can go after. And present to the courts what our costs are.
Something we definitely need to do. I know, I'm just, I'm sort of, I mean, is it going to be enough? I mean.
Probably not.
I mean, because I, I know some of the couple, one of the situations we have right now is already running up quite a bit of money already, just for the possibilities of what's going on with it, so.
Right, and over time, you know, we may have reserves, some of these that, if later on, that, you know, that that we can recover that on some of these properties, so. There are problems to start with. That means already your collections are going to be on the tower.
Just had one quick question. So this is, this is crossing fiscal years because our fiscal year is up June thirtieth, correct?
Right.
So I was just wondering how you're going to do that. Are you going to take like fifty thousand dollars out of reserves this year and then fifty thousand out next year, or you're just going to take it out as needed?
So I would move into the fund cash of a hundred thousand and then that would.
In this, in this fiscal year?
In this fiscal year, before we close the year. And then whatever expenses we impart would be expenses, but decrease that most of our, our remaining cash and funds. So. Once we link, we'll capitalize that or set it up as a receivable.
And then hopefully we can have recovery of part of it.
Yes, Paul?
And Rheta, so if the judge comes back to code enforcement before June thirtieth, can code enforcement go ahead with the one they have in front of it that they've?
That's my hope is tomorrow they.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, so I, and that was a clear, you know, kind of message that, you know, probably start kind of going back through it. Actually, I wish I'd read it before that. It really does kind of outline our policies for that, so.
Thank you.
So I think, I think just setting up a unique plan helps us take all the noise out of it and make it really clean. If you're all right with that, so.
Yes, Debbie.
I am hoping, I don't know about the rest of you, but I am hoping that the community that is maintaining the property, that portion that, once they see that the city is becoming serious about moving forward and have a little teeth to what they've got going on, that perhaps we won't need to be as aggressive that they'll do it on their own. Once they find out, we'll see. I'm thinking positive.
Yeah, we might have some great success stories out of it. Maybe those, those are things maybe we can highlight.
The main thing is overall is to clean up our city, pretty simple.
And hopefully be able to recuperate part of the cost.
Yeah, we have, obviously, yeah. Because there'll be some, definitely some huge cost expenditures involved with that, but hopefully it'll pay off in the end result.
Well, I think that's just give the courts a clear trail for compensation.
Yeah.
I'll just go ahead and make the motion for then. No questions? No question? Oh, I'll second, okay. I'll second the motion. Do you want to read it? You're jumping the gun there. Yeah, Councilwoman Littleton. Alright, I'll make the motion that the city council approve a supplemental appropriation of one hundred thousand dollars for nuisance abandon, abandonment, abatement that will cross fiscal years twenty twenty-one and twenty one, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two for the abatement activities in a special purpose fund titled nuisance abatement where the city expects to recover costs through remedies outlined in Wayrica Municipal Code section one one zero oh one zero dash one one five oh three zero. I'll second. Sorry, correction. Hi. Hi.
Hi. Alright, moving on to number six. Discussion possible action, payoff request, authorize the payoff of the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, CWSRF financing agreement with the city of Wayrica. Project number C zero six forty-four sixty-five dash one ten, contract number zero zero eight one five five fifty amount of one hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred and two and ninety-nine cents. And I have that ninety-nine cents on or before June fourth, twenty twenty-one. Kind of just added one penny to that.
So this is, really we just have, this is almost like prepaying one year early. We have just two years. But kind of under review of all our existing debt, the USBA is going out for a bank anticipation notes, this, even though it's going to be gone in two years. This thing became kind of problematic because it didn't have the parity that they wanted. And so there it's like this kind of, well, you know, we might have to get the, to read, you know, state water resources control board, you know, get them to write a letter, write them in the contract and I'm like, oh my goodness, four hundred and forty-nine thousand. It just was, you know, something that I thought would be a little more expedient to just prepay early and remove that kind of hurdle in our path to success on this, I mean, three projects. So again, this was another document that probably did pre, didn't have all those normal protocols that they have on other debt parity in it. And so anyway, by prepaying it, which I am recommending, we can just eliminate that conflict in our financials.
I know, many, oh, Debbie.
Early prepayment penalties?
No.
No. No.
Good question.
Those are the ninety-nine cents.
Any other questions from the council?
I'll make the motion.
Alright, Jim.
Okay, I'll make the recommended motion to authorize payoff of the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, CWSRF financing agreement, city of Wayrica, project number C zero six four four six five one one zero, contract number zero zero eight one five 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 zero, in the amount of one hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred and two dollars. And don't forget the ninety-nine cents. On or before June fourth of twenty twenty-one.
Right, that's our demand.
This is Debbie, I'll second with no prepayment.
Alright, we have motion second, Mr. Baker, please.
Mayor Pretender.
Hi.
City Councilmember Freeman.
Hi.
City Councilmember Quill.
Hi.
City Councilmember Littleton.
Hi.
Hi. Thanks, Debbie. This is my view to it. Discussion possible, community development director. Adopt a resolution of the city council, of the city of Wayrica approving new classification for community development director and changes to a comprehensive pay schedule for the city manager and community development director. Rheta?
So this, we discussed this on the. I know the workshop and also the finance committee touched on it, but. And so, as you know, we've got some retirement happening. We're excited for those individuals. But we're also realizing that we need, they have gotten behind on salary secondary schedules with the firm market and going on that. So what we're looking at is with respect to the city manager, we had this workshop, I believe, on this or discussion on that. We looked at increasing the salary range for the city manager to one hundred and forty to one hundred and eighty thousand for upcoming placement of the position. And then also we stepped back and looked at RIS and see on, you know, kind of this whole, and I didn't bring the work chart, but we both looked at it at the workshop where kind of we got this community development that has building services, that has planning services. If I have, if there is money ever, and there will be, whether or not we have housing, we have coordinator and also the fiscal tax, put it in that work chart, what you did again this evening. But so this reflects those changes, it reflects within the community development director, the roles of the inclusive roles that you find in director and a compensation range that we've, we've got that would be, would be competitive for that recruitment. And I may turn over the stage. Do you want to add anything on the, the development director or Andy, or if you have any questions?
Yes, Steve. If you would like, I just want to point out by creating a separate committee development director as opposed to adding that on as one of the duties of the city manager, we're likely that people that have got a background in planning in terms of their education and experience previously rather than trying to learn on the job. Planning is increasingly critical and although I have some bit of a background, the only time I applied to be a planner, I did just, I think it would be appropriate, probably will.
Some comments, council, audience?
I think it's a good move. I know that the council did something similar with the community development officer and I know that other cities have done so as well. So I consider it a good move, I'd make the motion.
Comment, I'm sorry, sorry about that. Lorenzo, please.
Can you come down to this?
And speak real loud, we'd like to know. Pay scale for the director?
Yeah.
It was seventy-two thousand to ninety-four thousand, give or take a little bit. Seventy-two, I'll give the exact number, seventy-two thousand six hundred and two twenty to ninety-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven point four one. Be direct, be exact. Another question? Oh, yes.
Well, this may be too big of a question. I'm going to kind of maybe whittle it down. So budget-wise, the town move is a deep squeeze. I'm just kind of wondering how your budget is and where this is coming from to do all these moves.
Right.
And I know my water bill was a value to me, not even flushing extra fluids. So I'm kind of curious, you know. It's how that's not bad.
No, that's. Good question. Well, like I said, with the water bill in regards to that, that's, we're steadily increasing that. For so many years, they didn't increase it and that got us behind on that. But that now it's just a slow increase on that. But yeah, budget-wise. But yeah, budget-wise, I'm sure Red will have that.
But this doesn't come out of water, water has to stay within water.
I'm curious of all the budget, I mean, houses, is this going to be keys that are, you know, put on the residents, like, where are you guys getting them?
No. No, Red allowed to have it, no, that won't be put on residents.
Um, so this will constrain on our budget, um, on that, um, but these positions are, um, probably below their. Income are already at that already, so it's really kind of a net, um, a phase in of about, um. Could be up to forty thousand on the City Administrator, City Manager position, um, in salary. And then probably incremental, um, ten thousand on, um, from the deputy. So it will be coming from sales tax revenues if those are up. And or, um, with the project, there is planning fees randomly charged as well for the services of the planning director. Um, there's a lot of that housing money coming from the state. Um, where there might be planning activities from those housing that were already kicking advantage of, or running. And sixty thousand grants as well as other. And over the next four years, we anticipate, um, another hundred and fifty thousand in grant money for housing-related activities. See, the other one, a hundred and eleven thousand. That could go to planning, uh, to Community Development possibly, that's coming out from the state. That's part of their.
So our taxes are getting us home.
Yeah.
Some, some of this is mandated by the state, that, that they are, the governor. And the state legislature are requiring cities to provide new houses. I'm not saying they may, just they're requiring us to do that or they will punish us, and it will be a monetary punishment. But it's true.
And I don't regret anybody, you know, wages and, I mean, those costs are crazy right now. But I just know too, the county, there's a lot of us working there, we're not competitive with anybody else in the state either. We have so many people that should be at the management level, making other twenty bucks now, so I get it, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, thank, thank you though. Thank you for the question. Any other questions? Council questions?
I'll make the motion if you're ready. Okay, um, I'd like to make the recommended motion, which is adopt the resolution of the City Council of the City of Wairega. Approving new classification for Community Development Director and changes to the comprehensive pay schedule. For the City Manager and Community Development Director.
Motion, we have second.
Council Middleton, I will second the motion.
Okay, move on to number eight, special possible action, water and wastewater construction. And field technician, adopt the resolution of the City Council of the City of Wairega for the employment of a. Water and wastewater construction and field technician and authorizing the City Manager to execute. An agreement regarding such limited term employment together with any and all other necessary documents. We're going to Reda.
So I'll kind of pick it up then and then kind of get to the question that's a little bit, um. But, um, as you know, the budget meeting, we got to have parts everywhere, kind of all the upcoming projects. And, um, in the next four years, we're going to be in period of major increase. And it's the good news for residents that may be inconvenienced, but, um, you are going to be in this kind of what I call. Unparalleled to any construction period I've been here, uh, of all these projects running concurrent. So, um, as you know, in the Highway Three project, since relocation of utilities, they maybe got to nineteen thirty-five. Um, that way under state highway three, um, that project one was twelve million on that. It's just, uh, as you see from all the charts and diagrams and constructions. Um, it is, it is a complex project. In addition, we'll be running the East Limits Water Distribution and Filter Quack project in burping for about five point two million. Thereafter, we kick into the wastewater collection project, which is, we call the Burge Street Service, we have about five point five million. Moving right into the water supply and storage system to replace the Shasta developed, I'm going to take it development, it takes, Dave as well, five point five million. These are all graph, I think, um, for the wastewater collection system that we're doing, so, yeah, servicing on. Finally, we have the urban, um, street resurface, which is a skip project. Never, we do that, we'll be needing to replace some underground utilities on that, so another underground. Um, moreover, we got, um, in addition to all this, the A R R C damage. Looming over us in the background. So these projects require staffing in, we told them in the Palm Creek, first month, project, the city hired that. A former public works and forth supervisor that acted with filter fishing capacity. And that was just one project that they were on, um, and they were hired because they're expert knowledge. Um, again, with, working with the engineers and contractors on this, we've identified that this requires at least a full-time employee. Keep on the ground, working with these, giving back to the, coming back to the, um, the public works group. And that, I was talking to Matt, he said, well, who's all that? Was it the sewer rehab that he worked in, in general, about twelve times a day by the contractors? While trying to still do his regular job. It's crazy, now, that's just one of, now we're going to be running five of these, possibly in burping. So we really need that, this position to help, um, help kind of get us over through this. Again, I'm, how do you define success? Success is climbing for success. And this is that climbing part of it, uh, for that, we did expect that a lot of the costs will be absorbed through, um, for access to grants. So, um, with that, there's a job description on that, we talked about this, I think, to the, well, the finance committee and at the budget meeting. So, do you have any specific questions that are, if you want to add anything? That's what it does for you, it is a, um, it's on a, it's not a permanent position, it's a contract position. Meaning it will phase out the construction season of years.
With everything going on, we need as much help as we can get, all these projects, especially the main street projects, it could be a crazy nightmare. Which is going to be happening soon. So, any questions, comments?
No, I'd like to make motion it. I'd like to move to adopt the resolution of the City Council of, uh, of the City of Wairega for the employment of a water and wastewater construction. And field technician and authorizing the City Manager to execute an agreement regarding such limited term employment together with. Any and all other necessary documents. Notice, notice the words, limited term employment and that's paid for through grants.
Correct, that's the main thing. All right, Mr. Baker.
So, um, just bringing to your cash on here, um, treasures report as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Um, and the general fund, all accounts have about eight point five million. Our street funds have about a million, only eighty-nine thousand, special revenue funds, one million, three hundred and sixty-two thousand. Um, special grants, one point three million, our water enterprise funds, two million, and our sewer and price funds, seven million. And we maintain a lot of reserves on those for a major unexpected. Raker, that's around us, so, um, those are well, well capitalized. Um, so, um. The most of that change in cash was about flat, so our cash twenty-nine point six million. And, um, the end of the month, twenty-nine point six nine, so about flat on half of the change, I think these are increased for our. We did receive our, um, part property taxes. Um, and our investment portfolio, we have in our CD portfolio about four point four million. And CDs about twenty-three million, and like, but the rest is on our command deposit account. On our fiscal performance report, um. Basically how we're doing, uh, near the day. And, um, again, we're ahead of where we normally are for performance, but we also could. Right, makes very conservative, we will not go with the, um, tax, our tax base, uh, so, um, we're ahead of the game already right there. Um, expenditures, we're keeping in check right now, so we're on track with our budget and expenses. Apple that late, street funds are on track, on track, and, um, with that, we probably are going to ramp up as they're getting into construction. Um, I think they're going to have to do some of those projects here, probably towards the end of June or early July, so they cross over into the next year on that. Uh, and really. Um, special revenue funds are on track, of course, our sewer but are on track, but they're going to get raised next year. Of these projects, so, um, really, everything's looking good for closing out this year, um. As far as us, us looking better than expected.
Yeah, a lot better than like this time last year. Yes.
The time we were budgeting, everything sounded pretty grim and pretty bad.
Big change from this time last year.
Yeah, so, um, but that's what I have on treasures, probably any specific questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Curious on the, on the Highway Three, I, uh, to speed obviously, but I'm just curious about moving utilities. What's that about, the construction on the Highway Three and the?
Yeah, so Highway Three, this next, this next coming year, we're starting a project on, um, well, actually, we'll be doing some infrastructure stuff sooner, but. Um, the whole Main Street's getting redone, so it's going to be a good, good project. Or, we have to fix a lot of our infrastructure in the process, so, so we have our sewer, our water lines and all that stuff. Certain sections of, of the streets are obviously older than others, so there'll be some more, uh, problems there. But actually Caltrans is actually paying for a chunk of it, so that's, that's a good thing. Um, but we have to come up with X amount of dollars, I can't remember what that, what is that figure we decide on?
Of us?
Yeah.
On the, on the financing, we're going to do, um, overall, the financing, six, six million. Water side, it could be up to two, two million, two and a half million out of pocket, however. Um, we'll recover part of that background.
Are you moving? I thought you said something about on Highway Three moving, actually.
Oh, no, 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 not moving, no, we're just, it's getting all redone. Yeah, basically, it's, it's.
The nineteen thirty-five pipes that are underneath the highway, so that we don't have to tear up a new highway.
Yeah.
They're going in and they're replacing all those old leaking pipes and putting in new ones.
So it's staying the same path, is that what you're getting, so, one end of it, the, the north end, we're doing some concrete. And then we're doing pavement through the rest, and then it's the south end, there's a big chunk that's going to be concrete too, so.
Matt, are we repairing or replacing those water and sewer line, the underground?
Oh, also there are sections that, uh, Main Street that have up to four trunk sewer lines that run, they carry all the sidelines. Three and four, there's blocks, blocks of three and four, taking one in the center lane for safety, because my guys work in the field, they're actually working. Middle of the dirt pocket, um, so that's, that's mainly the sewer side, and then the water, like, the top goes all the way back to nineteen thirty-five. Steel pipes, all that, have lead joints, so that's all kind of like, so, there are a lot of it being replaced in place with undergrounding methods. Where we can, so we don't have to build the cut, um, the same one, a lot of it, so you have to go out and find the best one in the pocket. It's tip to tail all the way through town, and then Caltrans is coming in after we do that, those upgrades, tearing the sidewalk or better, the street all out.
Wow, so, so what's going to be like, when you, what's going to be barricaded till we can't go down Main Street?
Yeah.
For, for three years.
Yeah, it's not just one year for it, it's good, it's going to be pretty intense, and the people that were here back in ninety, or was it, what year did we do it last? Stuff like that, we remember the, uh, the chaos back then, but this is de- definitely well thought out now. It's not as what it was back in the nineties, when it was tore up, and it's just kind of a zoo, they, they've got it well mapped out this time. And there's going to be some real significant changes that will make it a lot better, especially for the future, we're not going to have to touch it for. I'm, I'm not going to have to worry about it. Anyways.
That's up luck.
Any other questions on number nine then? Is the treasures report?
No, we have to accept it, right?
Correct, that's on, that's on any other questions that we can do, yes.
Okay, any other questions, otherwise I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion that we approve, uh, Tre- City Treasurers Report, Cash Balances Report, Quarterly Treasurers Investment Report. Budget of Revenue and Expenditures to year-to-date actuals through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, and Fiscal Performance Report, March thirty-one.
Council Middleton, I will second.
Motion of second, Mr. Baker. Number ten, discussion possible action, ratification of interim chief of police employment agreement, ratification of a retired. Annuity employee, employment agreement for the interim chief of police and to direct staff to begin active recruitment. Police, Chief of Police and appropriate fiscal and staffing resources to facilitate such recruitment.
Oh, let's start out with me, um, as you, as you know, we did hire an interim police chief. And, uh, this Mark Kilwood is sitting somewhere behind him. And, uh, he has already had the chance to retire, I want to point that out, uh, just meaningful in my life right now. But we, we, uh, we asked him if he would help us out, uh, he's a interim chief of police, and he was willing to do that for the city. There are certain requirements, uh, we entered into an agreement, which is in your packet, and that's why he is on board. In addition to that, because it, uh, hers rules for retirement, we need to, uh, be actively recruiting. And so we're bringing that to you to start that process now. There's some things that go into actively recruiting, let's start out with looking at the job descriptions and how they interact. We also will be talking to about how this interacts with the City Manager. But we did want to make sure that we comply, uh, with the. So that's what's in front of you, and since he's already on board.
I want to thank Mark again for stepping into this role and, and just stepping up to the plate and just putting the community first. And he didn't, he didn't have to come out of retirement, he had, he had a good job, and that he's number one. Uh, priority is to serve the citizens of Wairega, so I just, I just want to thank him. So. I would love a motion.
Okay, gratification, let's see, uh, discussion possible action, uh, with gratification of the retired. Annuity employment agreement for interim chief of police and to direct staff to begin the active recruitment for the chief of police and to, uh. And to appropriate the fiscal and staffing resources to facilitate such retirement.
This is Debbie, I'll second.
We have motion in the second, Mr. Baker, please. Number eleven, discussion possible action, the twenty twenty, one nineteen twenty twenty audit. Acceptance of the City of Wairega audited in the financial state. The twenty twenty, nineteen twenty twenty audit, acceptance of the city of Puerto Rico audited in the financial statement fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty twenty. Ready?
So, to brief you, I'll spread formally to the council. The fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty, as you know, kind of taxes were delayed until maybe. The last state, the normal April date was extended for today, so by the time. So auditors, the time the auditors and all those got together, there was a little bit of delay this year in getting the report finalized, but. The good news out of the report is there are no law requirements, there wasn't a single audit. Requirement this year, so none of the federal bills and physicals on that, for that, so. Anyway, it's issued and we're moving our eye on it to next year already, so. Do you have any question? A draft of this was presented, we didn't really have the tests to go over it, but it wasn't really an interesting year compared to what we're coming into. Because I think. We should hit the federal threshold this year with a lot of the, the American rescue plan.
Well, I think it was interesting, Mr. Mayor, I think it was interesting because we didn't go into the whole, isn't it, to be, we were going to. And luckily, our city has been very conservative and we have good reserves, so we were prepared to do that if necessary, but luckily, we didn't have to.
Which read as good leadership.
Good job, Brett.
It's a group effort, yeah, I think, on everything, so, but yeah, so it's, it's positive. I think we are, are coming into. The next five years, so much construction and strong position, and that's another thing that allows us to make changes, look in the park. Go a little further out there on the, on the competition that happens for someone to keep positions.
Any other questions?
Do we have to accept the audit or not?
Yeah, yes. Yes, you have to make a motion.
I'd make a motion that we accept the night, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty audit. Financial statement fiscal year nineteen twenty.
Councilor Middleton, I'll second.
Motion in second, Mr. Baker again.
Mayor of the county.
Um.
Can you tell someone who's employed?
Hi.
City council member employed.
I.
City council member Middleton.
I.
I. Okay. It's Will.
Thank you, Brett.
What's this, this one's not you?
She gets to sit down.
Twelve thousand. Oh, that's right. We're number thirteen, sorry. Discussion possible action, city manager recruitment selection of recruiting firms, is this probably Joan?
Yes, this is me, so as you all know, I've been on the phone a lot. And talking to several different recruitment firms, what I'm handing around to you now is the top. Put this up so you can hear, the top firm of William Avery and Associates out of Los Gatos. And Mr. Avery, I talked to him again this afternoon, and he would really like to come up and talk to us face to face, I gave him the option of face to face or Zoom, like we talked about. He said he'd really like to come up, and I said, well, we're a real hands-on council, and we'd rather see him face to face too. He's excited about it, he worked at the courthouse years ago, as you know, he was a city council, he was not city council, he was a city manager, but he's also got his own firm for a number of years. And, and he really likes Puerto Rico, he spent quite a bit of time here, and he's excited about coming back. So if we can pick a, a date next week that fits everybody, he will, he will come up and meet with us.
I like the idea that he's done some stuff locally here too.
He knows our area, he knows we're rural, and he knows that we have specific needs, and I like that.
That's a big plus, if somebody knows our, our needs, a small rural area, to know what, what our main obstacles are.
So, thinking before talk meeting sometime, anytime next week, seven to eight.
To, to point out that at this point, we've been having some special meetings that. We haven't actually looked at having a workshop. So, that date, which sometimes is on Tuesday, sometimes on Wednesday. Depending on whether there are conflicts, might be a date that people have already worked off on their calendar.
Oh.
Or not.
That would be a perfect time if we can, we can incorporate at the same time, possibly.
The ninth, with, with the ninth work, that was one day to get available.
The ninth was?
Wednesday, Wednesday, the ninth, does that work for everybody? I told him I'd call him tomorrow and let him know.
Okay, great. You think there's possibility he'll come here, huh?
Yes, he'll come here at, at four o'clock.
It works for me.
Does that work for everybody?
Okay, so, we will reserve the chambers for four o'clock Wednesday.
Is that called stroke concern?
Do we need to vote on this, on the choice?
I don't think we're making any selection until we talk to him, so there's no action right now, is there?
I think that, I think that right now, like consensus to have.
I guess it'd be consensus at this point, yeah, it's all, have a consensus of the, the council, to, we'll get him next weekend.
Yes.
For, for purposes of, we'll write something, there's a consensus of council to invite Mr. Andrew Avery. And Associates next Wednesday.
Thank you, John.
I don't know if they can hear me up there or not.
I think you got it, yep, he's a thumbs up, we're good.
All right, on my left shoulder.
Alrighty, we won number fourteen, discussion possible action, homelessness, urban campsites, and so we need this. Major discussion, so we, do you want to start it off, Steve, or you want to?
Well, I was just gonna say, for members of the council, we've obviously had a homeless meeting of the council, however informal. And I have discussed homelessness on a number of different occasions. And one of the things that has come up is because of the Boise decision, it's much more challenging. To move homeless encampments out of areas that might be high fire danger, or. Or, or areas for water. Though, though, or sensitive areas that, and so we're looking at that, there's been a discussion of having an urban campground. I guess with that, I might rely a lot on the, on the committee members.
So I'll start it off with, you know, the Ninth Circuit Court, which is the Boise decision that he's, we're talking about. Ninth Circuit Court had a ruling back in December that we, as a city cannot. Sight, kick out, or amongst a lot of other things, homeless people unless we have a place for them to go. So that's a safe place for them to go, correct?
Is that, is that off public property, Mr. Mayor?
Correct, okay, city property. So, with that in mind, we need to find a suitable place for the homeless to, and that would be. What we call the urban campsite, we're trying to, going off of what, the urban campsite of what we've done research on through Medford and some of the other, our areas. Urban campsite is just a, as a safe place for them to pitch a tent, will have bathrooms, water, drinking water, and a few other amenities too for them. But it's, it's in place for them to go that's safe, drug-free. And keep them to where there's no violence or crimes going on, a lot of these camp, encampments we're just, we're looking at now, get so large and so. Unrestricted, that we have a lot of crime to go on, and a lot of, a lot of bad things to go on periodically, so we need to have a safe place for them to go. I myself, I know I've spoken with numerous amount of homeless people, and some of them just, that's what they want, they just want a safe place to go, they don't. They don't want to be around a bunch of people that are doing illegal activities, so this is, you know, keeping this in mind, we need to discuss this, to find out what is our options. One of the options we were looking at as a council, and I've had this in itself, it'd be an open forum for sure, that everybody knows. That over there off of, face of foothill, what is the address on that one, does anybody have the address?
I'm sorry, I think I, here, I just simply said it's the personal meeting next to Beacon of Hope.
Yeah, which is.
Immediately south of.
I had it written down.
Trinity Station. And immediately north of Beacon of Hope, on the east side of, of foot hill.
So with that in mind, we were looking at, we, that property we have next to the Beacon of Hope, the property was, we're designing for this. Urban campsite, and hopefully would be able to work with the Beacon of Hope in the future on, on regulating that and. Make sure it's safe also there, but we have to have certain things to make sure it's safe. The ground was needed to be tested, and so we have to do some cleanup on the ground first, and did we hear any more on that, on, just like a boy, or Mr. Baker?
I probably have the same information, but there is some, that is the soil, they found some anomalies, which requires a little bit more testing before we can come up with a. Program that has to be approved by the Department of Toxic Substances Control in terms of how much soil we would have to remove, how many, basically, how many inches.
Inches, yeah.
Would need to be removed, so it's gotten, it seems like it takes forever to identify that, but they are redoing some of the samples to try to deal with the anomaly where. One place there's hardly any, and another place there's more, and then be able to come up with, so it's still, I hesitate to give a final date, because. It depends on what they find out.
Right. And you had an appointment date, I thought.
Well, are you talking on more samples since GeoCon just took core samples two weeks ago?
No, but they have to send those to, they took some samples, they came back with some results, the results had an anomaly in them, so they've gotta use more of the samples that they took.
Yeah, those, those, yeah, those core samples were sent off, we are going to probably, she, Alex said we're probably gonna take off about six inches. On the back half, she's, she's afraid that it could be quite a bit more on the front half. So they are, they're rechecking that to see, and then after we get that back, what we need to take out, then as, as Steve pointed out, then we have to file another permit with the federal government, correct?
I actually think it's the State Department of Toxic Substances.
Is it state, okay, and then, and then. And then at that point, soil will be removed, and will be removed down to, there's a dump, I think it's Hymal'sville, Sacramento, where, where it all goes. And then we'd have to start backfilling.
The, the federal government is involved because the environmental protection agency, so technically, it's automatically, we have to get their permission for each step.
So in the process, we're probably looking, you know, a few months worth of, before we're able to. Possibly even utilize that property, correct? I think that's what we're coming to the.
My, my hope, my hope, I can't speak for Steve, I can't speak, my hope would be that we could use it at least by October, November, going into, and that's, you know, when, when I've, when I'm working with Beacon of Hope. You know, I mean. There's, they're a little farther out because they need about another hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to finish. And so, but they're aware that we are, we're shooting for something there, and then, and then they're, they're already starting to look at next winter for shelters, how they're gonna. How they're gonna keep a shelter for next winter, because obviously with COVID this winter, none of the churches wanted to work with, with them, they, and I understood, they were, they were worried about the, the spread of COVID.
Yeah. Well, that, you know, that mind, and this is part of our discussion tonight, is what do we do in the process? You know, our first and foremost is to the safety, well-being of our citizens and, and the safety of the, of the homeless individuals too, so. You know, with that in mind, we have to look at that and make sure that we come up with a logical place, we looked at some, looked at a few different places. Around town that the city owns. And I'm, I'm still gonna go back to my, I had a proposition earlier as a temporary. Area, and it would be in the front part of the city yard, and I think we all looked at it, it's the safest place right now to, to move and to keep the. Homeless safe, and it's, it's well shaded, has water, has fire hydrants. It's, can be well controlled if opened up properly. That's my proposal to the, the council. On that aspect, because I think, like I said, it's the safest place that we have in town right now, with the least amount of impact on the residential area, and the least amount of impact on the businesses and stuff too, so. I don't know what, yes, Mr. Boy.
Well, I, I'd like to go, I'd like to go on further proposal, because I thought the committee, I thought you and the committee, particularly. Listening to the chief who has logistics expertise in, in military, and I mean, the questions he asked were not. You know, where are we going, what are you doing, how many people do we have to home, what, I, I, I am sorry that that didn't go through. I, I'm gonna speak to my three council members that were unhappy with that, that we were in no way trying to take your power away from you. Dwayne and I were no way trying to do that, nor was the committee trying to take your power away. I'm going to propose, and I've already told Steve this, that we go ahead and have two a month homeless meetings. We'll make them full council meetings, start them at four, like we've been doing, keep them at an hour and a half. And that we get the whole council here, so that we can get council input, because I don't want to have another program that we think is a good program, and that ten of us have, have, you know, said, hey, this looks good. And the other thing is, we don't have the time to come back to a council, right, we, we don't, the, the thing is, we don't, we don't have the time to come back and say, hey. We'll meet in seven days, we're not gonna worry about a fire up there right now, we're, you know, we're not gonna, we don't, we don't care, if it burns up there, no big deal, just burn the college down and behave health and stuff. And so I'm gonna propose that right now. I'd like to, I'd like to see two meetings added, every, of the first and the third Sundays. Each month, if the, if our, if those tend to be a. A holiday that we just canceled, but I gotta say, this isn't a power check, man, this was, was, wasn't Dwayne and I about power, I need to say that to my fellow three council members. Had nothing to do with that, this had to do with looking at what's best for the city, and this had to do with what's looking at best for the, for the homeless at the time. And, you know, I will, I will, I won't apologize for looking at what's best for the city, and what's best for the county, and I am not running. For, I'm not trying to garner votes, run for reelection or whatever, I just, we were just trying to do a job, and I want to thank, you know, like Ben, and Steve, and Mark, and Willow. Trying to think if there was any, you know, for being involved in, because they came up with great ideas, you guys, you guys had one, it's just not a reflection on you guys, it's a reflection on Dwayne and I.
And I just. So I just, I say, with our main, our main thing is, is, like I said, we, safety of our citizens, first and foremost, being able to. Open something up that's gonna keep not only citizens on our property safe, but it's also to keep the homeless safe also. Next, I'll let me go to Corey first, okay?
Corey? So I just want to speak, because some of our citizens are looking a little confused, maybe of what took place, and I'm not gonna get into details, but. Something was moved forward of a location that three of us were not aware, and we're not happy about. And this location is a city-owned property at the end of Lenox Street that borders the freeway in a residential neighborhood. And it just came to a discussion with the three of us and Mr. Baker, that we needed to put our brakes on, because my opinion, this is my opinion only. I did not feel that location was appropriate, suited for the many residents that live right there, with everything that goes on at the camps, drug use. Weapons, and to pull up on Lenox Street with many houses right there, turn around, or what have you, I just did not think it was appropriate, and the discussion came to an end.
So, that's why we're moving.
Everybody's looking at us like they don't know the locations, I want the location to be identified, but that's what the city, one of the city's properties was.
And that's why we're moving forward.
Yes.
Actually, ingress and egress is, is actually not through Lenox, but it's through. Formal ingress and egress would be through the Montague Road, and to my mind, suburban is not a suburban, the propane, it's not, AmeriGas is not a residence, it's a. It's an industrial or a commercial, so the area behind that would only be industrial, commercial, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be residential.
But they would, they would go on Lenox Street, they would not go all the way down to that end of town.
That's why we're.
So, you know.
Yes, Don, ready?
Okay, so if your true aim is to keep the city safe. Then instead of spending two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for an air conditioner in a building that may or may not ever be used. Why don't you buy the building that's right there, like Beacon of Hope for sale, huge lot, uh, like a huge building. For winter, it's fenced in already for these people, it's perfect.
What's the link?
It's, um, the, the dilemma with that, if you walk it, that's a lumber drying shed, so if you have a six inch piece of wood, then you have two inches of air to go through, then you have another six piece, inch of wood, and which. It's, it was, the shed was built for drying, that's, that's a real definite, the real total behind it, and the roters jack the price up almost a hundred thousand dollars since you listed it.
So, but, you know, but this is, this is something we're gonna bring forward, that's why, that's why we want to have future meetings, because we need, we need to address this in a, in a, another level.
That's, that's what I'm asking for, Donnie. I'm asking for the first and third Monday of every month to be an, an open, a full council meeting with only one agenda item and that is homeless. That's what I'm asking for. I've asked my fellow council members to commit to that.
So I guess we want to move forward on that?
Yes, I do.
Before we move forward on the other proposition, that, okay?
Yeah, because I think we could be here for an hour or two more tonight on, just on homeless.
Oh, yeah. No, I, I totally agree. Um, uh, okay, real quick, I'm sorry. Well, that's, that's the thing.
That's right. That's, that's.
That's in process.
Yeah, that's why we have to have more discussion on how we're gonna do that. That's why we wanted to uh, partner up with Beacon of Hope. Because with them being able to monitor it on a daily basis would be more applicable on that situation. Right now, we're, we're talking, you know, discussion of the urban campsite, it falls solely on us, which, which uh, burdens our law enforcement. You know, tremendously, but that's why the proposition I'm talking about is the area there in the front of the city yard. I've already mapped it all out. It's easy for them to patrol. Um, it is actually, everything else is separately fenced off. So there's, and with barbed wire on top of the six foot fence, so it's a lot more safer than, than uh, we've been told. But it's, there is, there's safe there. The gates are automatic to where that's all safe. But they can, we, way we have this mapped out is that patrol units can go right in a circle, right in that front part of the city yard. So it's really easy for them to look at that and keep, and keep it safe.
You have a camp where you're gonna concentrate the homeless surrounded by barbed wire.
No, just, that is not, no, it is not, it is not. No, the city yard is barbed wire and has gates. Not, not the, not there and not where they're at. It has, there's fencing in there, but they, there's actually, they can come and go on the side of, on the backside of Deer Creek and all that. There's, it's not, it ain't, it ain't secured right now, so.
We have, uh, Arger, so we have somebody that wants to speak on, on the phone.
Hi, I just want to say that I appreciate Council Middleton's concern about a homeless camp being in the area there by AmeriGas. I am one of those homeowners that would be directly across the creek from that homeless camp. I don't think it's a good place for that. I don't think it's, um, good for, for one of those camps to be in a, in a residential area. Um, I have not lived in that home for four years, but we do own it. We have renters in it. And even now, they have people that are living down at the creek, knocking on the door in the middle of the night. Asking for food, asking for water, asking for blankets. They've been going through their trash cans. And if there's a, a, an established camp over there, I believe that that would become even more so, those kinds of happenings, more violence, more theft. Um, there's a great possibility down there of fire. They're always, the renters I have in that home are always watching that area for any sign of smoke or fire. So I, I appreciate um, Council Middleton's uh, comments on that. And I just want to voice my concern as a homeowner in that area that I don't think that is a good property for a homeless camp. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So, I just wanna have a question on your meetings if you guys wanna talk about four o'clock. So that means people want to be worked for five, that, that. Well, just throwing that out there. And then, um, I do have another question on a property location, but I'll let you get to your meeting.
You open at six thirty then?
I, I'm, I'm.
I'm fine with six thirty. Yeah, it's just we've been doing four o'clock.
Yes, ma'am.
I can't be Monday. I have prior commitment. One of those Mondays, I have uh, local transportation commission and then I have another meeting um, on the other Mondays, so I can't do Mondays. Um, local transportation commission, well, that one will be over by five thirty, but the other one starts at six thirty, so.
Let's go third and fourth Monday then. I mean, uh, or, or second and fourth Monday.
Second, fourth, oh.
Mondays don't work for me, but you guys go ahead.
On any of them?
You guys, Mondays don't work.
Okay.
Yeah, that, you know, if you guys want.
Tuesdays and Wednesdays aren't gonna work, so we've got Thursday and Friday. How do Thursdays or Fridays work?
Most Thursdays work. The last Thursday doesn't, but.
I mean, that's, we're paid, we're paid to be here to do that. We're not paid to cancel things, we're paid.
First and third, maybe that would, that would work.
Thursday what? First and third Wednesday?
Yeah, cause that'd be, we have friends that live on Wednesday, right?
First and third Thursday then.
And Mr. Mayor.
Five thirty?
I just wanted to agree with Cory is that um, this last thing, um, and I, I know that, that your intentions both of you were, were good. I understand that they just happened too fast. And you know, there's certain things that we have to do, we have to do publicly, we have to do on ourselves and we have to vote on. And it just happened before three of us knew what was going on.
No, and I, I, like I said, I apologize for, I apologize for jumping the gun. I just, um, everybody that knows me knows that I set my mind to something, I'm gung ho and I do it. So, that's what we're trying to do. My, my intention was to keep the citizens safe. And I know it is all ours, so I'm not trying to say it isn't anyways. I'm just saying our first and foremost is to keep the citizens safe and.
But it's all of us.
And that's exactly it.
Well, we had a fire safety issue and unfortunately Jerry, last time I'd looked, do you guys get it? Do you usually tell the fires to wait? You'd like say, hey, wait for a week and I'll get over there and put your eyes on it, or what do you do? Do you usually roll on a fire when it happens or do you tell it to wait for a week? Well, uh, and, and, so, so the council will get together on it. So, I, I'm sorry, uh, to my fellow councilmen, I, I, I just don't see.
Yeah, that's, that's why we need to move forward. So, so I, I guess, what, what my proposition is.
Five thirty.
Okay, Steve.
Well, if you have a proposition, you're gonna say some dates, that'd be great.
Okay, so the, the, like I said, the proposition is, like I said, the front of the city yard and we've all.
Can, can we go back to dates first?
Okay.
Let's, let's get some meetings set up. I think that's where we need to go.
Yeah, that, I think that's.
Okay, so first and third.
Because we're not gonna do anything tonight. We're not gonna get this council to agree on anything.
Correct? First and third at five thirty.
So, let me ask this question. So the first Thursday of this month is staff tomorrow. And then the third is the seventeen.
And we need them both.
Okay.
And say six thirty and we'll cap it at.
Six thirty or five thirty?
He said five thirty.
I'd say go, I mean, Mrs. Gorman, Miss Gorman pointed out a good thing. I'll point out a good thing, and that is, if we want to get people here from the community, probably better to go later, just go at the regular time. Keep it consistent, right?
It does lay eight, six o'clock.
At six thirty, so you know all our meetings are at six thirty.
No. The public to be involved. That's the whole idea is to bring the public in. I wish this was filled up all the time, so.
Right, spread the word.
So, I'm just looking at third, seventeen, and then in July, it's the first at the sixteen.
And Joan, I want to let you know that I have a vacation plan starting at ten in the morning on Thursday. Yeah, I'm gonna cancel it so I can be here. There are other things that I think may be more important than some of the things we have in our lives.
So if we, and then I think that we need to talk about, one of the things is obviously uh, being available for citizen comment is important. But there also are some partners that will need to, doctors, some of them will uh, work business hours that may not be available after business hours, if they were from a government agency, for example. Uh, they might be able to, it just depends on what it is. So we may have to have some flexibility.
Steve, what are you, uh, yeah, what are you saying again? Say that again?
I, I believe that um, when you get into, it was one of the questions that I think Lorenzo asked was who operates the camp and the procedures and that sort of thing. So, I'm assuming that the initial thing is where. And then the next thing is what sort of facilities? And then the next thing is how do you operate it? And then the next thing is probably what partners you need.
I think you may be putting the cart before the horse. I think what we're looking at right now, Steve, what we're looking at is, is fire safety. We're not, we're not looking at the camp at all yet. Our, our number one concern is fire safety. That's what got derailed. Okay, the camp, the camp's farther down the line. We, we, and we do have lots of things.
Long-term, I think Mr. McCoy's talking, it's long-term versus short-term. Right now, we're pretty much talking short-term. Because short-term, we need to take consideration, like I said, fire safety of, of our town, plain and simple. And it's uh, beans of the area that we're talking about, where we've had already two fires up on the side of the hill by behavioral health and up above COS. That's, that's the problem that we're looking at. We know that we're going to have a uh, a, a fire reduction project that we're gonna be initiating on that rather soon. So with that in mind, with that fire reduction. Fuel reduction, excuse me, fuel reduction project that we're gonna be doing around that area, COS area that in, because of that, we can't say move out and not give them a place to go. So the short term versus long term is basically what Mr. McCoy's talking.
Very well, if I put the cart before the horse, I apologize. My only point is that if you get the horse out there, pretty soon you're gonna be.
Well, I got, I got the cart in front of, I got the cart in front of the horse too, but so I, well, there you go. So, that's what happens.
I think that pretty soon we'll outline that, but first meeting can be about the horse.
Well, I think what we do is first we need to go on with what we've been doing. I would think. We continue with what we've been doing. Correct. What, what the fire chief, the, 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 what the, the council will just be brought in. We have the fire chief, we have uh, code enforcement, we have the uh, police chief, um, we have Ben or Matt here. And we, and we, I mean, doesn't that seem logical to go with what we're doing? Or does it seem logical to stop and move and try and do something else? I, I'm, I'm, I'm asking an honest question.
Right, right now, I don't honestly know what we gotta do today. But we work out, we put it on as a workshop with some possible action at the end.
So I guess we will work out what.
No, I, I don't want it as a workshop. I want it as a meeting. And there's just, there's one, there's just one thing we're talking about, that's homeless. It doesn't need to be a workshop.
So, are we, okay, this is where we're, we're back to what we, what my first proposal was. We got, I think we got the date now. I think we're, we're good on that, right?
Yep.
Okay. So now, now we need to figure out what my proposal is. If, do we want to move forward on that proposal? Or do we want to wait more days? I mean, that's, we wait more days, we're just putting more citizens in jeopardy, so.
I'm fine with that location.
That's a perfect location. Talking about like a public work yard.
Yes, in front of that, not in the main, you know, it's out in front. And just so you know, it was brought to my attention. That used to be the only camps, campground in Warricka. Yes, that used to be, that used to be a campground in Warricka. It was the only campground.
Well, no wonder it looks parked like.
That's why it looks like a park. That's exactly why it's like a park. Yes, there is, but it's, there's too hard to patrol those.
I know, but it's not the only camp.
Yeah, but those were, those campsites were never, um, never, ever brought out to the public ever.
Those have been, the Boy Scouts, Boy Scouts have used them ever since, since I've been here.
Yeah, yeah, they've used it, but it's never was out to the public at all. So, yes, it was.
Is that it was a designated camp?
Designated, thank you. You're right. Thank you. Yes.
So are you talking about like where the dog county is or say?
No, it's out in front there. You know where the old YCTV channels or station building was, right behind it, basically. There's the dog training facility that the county has, right there, and basically alongside of it.
It's our property that the county has used it. They haven't used it.
They've never used it. It's a nice little place.
How are you going to, like, you were talking about keeping that safe? How are you gonna keep the drugs out of there?
Well, that's, that's where, that's what the needs about. Plus, this is what, where the proposal is there too, is there's actually a roundabout area. The PD can actually pull all the way through there, patrol all the way around that camp. Approximately about sixteen to twenty available sites that can be available right there.
West Will need security.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would just ask that the council take, before making a decision on the yard, on the service center, to look a little bit deeper, uh, let me get Rob Taylor, the water manager, to speak at the water board in California, to make sure that you can do that on top of an infiltration gallery. Let's use as our backup march.
Okay, well, yeah, the area I'm proposing is, you know, have temporary fencing going across any of the divided areas.
My, my concern from public works is that there's a three hundred foot long filtration yard, it's an eight foot high area underground that runs from the Caltrans fence all the way to the north.
How far is it buried?
It's about three hundred feet. It's all the full length from the side of the highway all the way to the Northwell Building. So there's a gigantic hybrid that intersects three mine shafts, the break and all with minor streams.
I guess, because where it's underground, so.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. My, my suggestion is that you make that decision after you have a little more information.
Right.
Okay, but here's my thing on this, because and this is what I said before, the longer the wait, the higher the risk that we're gonna burn down this town. So if you guys want that blood on your hands, then you can delay it as much as you want.
I reject the idea.
I'm not, I'm, I'm tired of delaying, that's all I can say.
Who owns the property? Uh, you know, you come off the freeway, the north exit there, and then you come right down and you as you, if you're coming southbound on I, I get off at the north exit. And then there's all, you guys just, somebody graded all those bushes.
Oh, yeah. Tyler Robbins graded it all last year.
Yeah, I can't remember who owns that property there. No, no.
I know it's great crosning stuff, but it's not like, why should we make them comfortable to where they want to live here? And they may not want to be about.
I, I, and I get it. It's like, unfortunately, without, you know, with the court ruling, uh, we if we try, if we make them uncomfortable, we can get sued. And other cities have gotten sued. I know, I know, I, I agree, but it's, it's, till we find, you know, a, a more viable way of um, treating this issue, then right now, it's, it's, it's just an issue that's a burden on the cities. Is what it has to, that the state and the federal government hasn't done anything about, unfortunately. They're trying to, they're trying to throw money around, but that's all they're doing, throwing money around. They're not, they haven't really done enough research on this. Um, nor near as much research as some of us have done, and spent the time as much as some of us have done. That sees that there's other alternatives that they can fix some of these problems, but unfortunately, we're left with that burden.
And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not really meaning that here. I mean, I know there's various groups of people there. You've got the people who want you back on their feet. And for them, you know, okay, I'm all for it, because they're on hard times.
Yeah.
That could happen to the honesty, but fairly easy actually.
Oh, yeah. So I, like I said, I've spoken with numerous amount of them. Um, and there is definitely some true hardcore, there's, there's guys that are working at Walmart, that are working, that are just on bad luck, just have some bad luck. So, that's what we're trying to address, is those, those situations. And hopefully with future assistance from, like I said, some organizations, maybe we can get them the proper uh, rehabs or uh, behavioral health or somebody that, cause a lot of mental illnesses is directly a result of this. A lot of drug and alcohol problems, some of those are the symptoms of mental illness too. So there's a lot, there's a lot of complexity to this situation, um, that affects different people in different ways. So it's it's a challenge, it's a challenging topic. It's across the country. Right now, like I think I, I stated this before, we uh, California houses seventy percent of the homeless population right now on the west coast, so. So that's a big number. And it's, we're, we're filling it as far as that goes. We, we fill it in our small communities.
Yes, for, for the city, it's actually a no-win situation. Because we, we, it's, it's one of those unfunded mandates. We're gonna have to do something. No matter what we do, half the people are gonna hate it, no ma, and half the people are gonna like it. It doesn't matter what we do. That, I mean, that's just, that's the sad thing. I mean, I'm, I'm surprised when I talk to people, I was sharing with some people that I, that I volunteer at the Beacon of Hope. And I'm surprised at my friends that say they don't want Beacon, they don't want to shelter her. Absolutely, they'll do everything they can to keep it out of this city. And I'm like, you gotta be kidding me. You got a man shelter, people are gonna come there. It's totally kind of encapsulated. And, and, and that and the campground, they want neither of them. But it's either that, or we let them go ahead and move into everybody's neighborhoods.
Yeah.
And just kind of let it go. Um, I live on Cedar. I got homeless people living in uh, in the alleys up there. Um, I live on Cedar. I got homeless people living in uh, in the alleys up there. And, and we're not talking about down here, we're not talking about uh, by the, we're not talking about by the creek. I, I, I used to live on Dexter. Uh, and, and we're not talking about that. We're talking about people living on, I mean, living. I mean, you'd be surprised if I told you whose houses they were living in the front or backyard up there. Just amazing.
Yeah.
Some people's back front yards open up on the one street and your backyard opens up on another. They're actually in these people's front yard. It's just crazy. So it's, it's not, it isn't an easy fix, and it is not gonna, I mean, it's not gonna be light. And that's evidenced by the, you, you see us here, and you see how much it has divided us. Um, it, it, but the problem is, we gotta take some kind, we gotta do something. And when our mayor got together, and I think uh, Cal Fire and several institutions got to get to say, you got a fire problem up there by the college, you gotta get those people out. And, and you're gonna get all that butt brush out of there, and we can't operate with them there, because it would be too dangerous. But I mean, no matter what he or I did, or what the five of us do together, it is gonna meet with.
Well, that's a potential parallax city right there.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're looking at. That's why we.
And that's why we gotta, that's why I said, we gotta move forward on something.
And the Boise decision, believe it or not, says, you gotta allow them to have a warming fire if they need it. Not, not necessarily now, but in the winter.
Yep.
So this is, this is what we're dealing with. This is why the Ninth Circuit Court, I mean, I'll get on my soap pockets box. This is why we need to get rid of the Ninth Circuit Court. We need all those judges out, all three of them. But we live in a very, in, in an area of the, of the Pacific and the Pacific Northwest where, I mean, yeah, we should, yeah, we need to be, I'm sure the Ninth Circuit Court would have told us we should bring champagne and, and, and probably bring him, um, you know, his Benedict. We have, uh, if they thought they'd get away with it.
So let's, let's get back to what.
Sorry about that.
No, you're good, you're good. We need to, we need to look at all different views on everything. Um, so what do we, we need, what do we, what is wish as a council? Do you want to go with my proposal and do it? Or do we want, because I'm, I'm, only thing I'm afraid of, we delayed the route, we delayed it more than we are going to have a problem. Guaranteed, we are, we are so dry right now that it's, it's getting beyond belief on the fire danger. When we're down to, what was it? Humidity was what, ten percent today or something like that? It was, it was low. It was low. So that.
Be a hundred and three tomorrow, they say. So, so it was a hundred today, at about five thirty.
You get a combination of the high temperature, low humidity, and winds picking up, it's, it's a target for disaster, is what it amounts to. So, yes.
I'm actually for the location pending the conversation that Matt's gonna have with the state people. But I think it's the best one. It's not gonna affect the neighborhoods or the businesses. It's not going to interfere. It, it's just the best.
Yeah, like I said, it has no impact on residential or, or businesses whatsoever.
Liz, Liz, what's that garage? Hi, Liz. So, so I'm looking at the humidity, it's twenty-two percent right now, but I do know, and our fire chief is here. He could probably tell us about fire danger right now. Hi, Jerry.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's, it's pretty obvious what's going on. We thought, uh, um, the twelve hundred indices, which is all the different burning indices that Cal Fire uses. I, I didn't hear what West State was, you know, it's the fall, but it was in that ten, twenty percent range, which is, you know, this year. You know, um, yeah, you're taking, you have it in the right mindset to take that and do what you have to do, because if you don't have, we already have issues, we're likely to, you know, go beyond what it hit. So, and we're with it on that, hard part with, we'll try and eliminate or as best we can, reduce the risk.
Right. Well, I, I'm gonna keep in mind too, that this is just a temporary location. It's not a permanent location. Our, our permanent location we're trying is over there by the Beacon of Hope, so. Um, we just need, I, I just, I don't think it's that much of an issue. The water safety, we have everything else fenced off. I just think that it's a delay, uh, delay tactic, and I'm not happy with it, so. Yes.
I, I agree to temporarily at least get them out of there and leave it firing here. Like you said, it's tempered. You can always, it gives us a little bit of time at least to avoid a fire and get them where we're all sitting. And then work on where we're really.
Exactly, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's common sense. I don't think we should fuck with that.
So what does that mean, council? I say we move forward. I'm, I'm tired of not moving forward, so this is, you guys, you guys gotta say, move forward or we delay it. That's, that's your choices right now.
Why do you think that the? Why do you think that the water is in jeopardy?
This is not a delay tactic at all. This is something that the water happens to wherever you should turn up. We actually brought it up with you, Debbie, when you were, uh, working toward the Y C T V area.
Yeah, just, yeah.
So that's, that's just what it's mine, because it's the same area. I'd just like to call, um, that his team on it, his professional on it.
Okay.
Have an answer by your first meeting.
Okay, as in Thursday?
Yeah.
Yeah, till Thursday, that, that would be fine.
But just keep in mind, if there is some other consequences, then where do we move?
As long as they're not, I think, Mr. Mayor, all I'm saying is as long as they're not directly on top of the infiltration gallery.
Okay.
That's, that's my only.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would say if any of the rest of the council has a, an idea that might be more appropriate, um, they should, they should bring it on that Thursday meeting. Yeah. And I think, I think we, I think we'd entertain it. Because we have tons of places we can put them in the city.
Yep.
We have tons of property that we own.
Where we ran into is the residential.
We, we do, Councilman Smith Freeman, you're shaking your head like, ah, we, we do.
It's just location is the hardest part.
Well, we have a place right up by the college. That's city-owned property.
You, you got, you got Bo Hitzin Park, you got, yeah, you've got the, the, the place where Caltrans told us they wanted them out because they were bothering their, you know, their egress and ingress. I'm not sure why Caltrans carries so much weight, but they're, obviously they do. Because we moved when they, when, when they said jump, we said how high as a council.
Well, they're, they're giving us money for, as you know, the Highway Three. You know, we, we managed to negotiate so that we don't have to pay as much money, so I, I don't know.
And we've waited years, several years for that.
I don't know about jumping. I know that they want to use that for state.
All right, well, so like I said, we're moving forward. Thursday, six thirty, this Thursday, we'll have a final discussion on location for a temporary location for an urban campsite. And that'll be temporary, but it'll be a final decision where we're going with this, because I don't want to, I don't want to delay anymore.
And members.
Council feels the same way.
Can, can, may, uh, members, plus Chief of Police, Fire Chief, either Code Enforcement and either Director Public Works or Ben at every meeting.
Yep.
Okay, so they can, they can make their plans.
Okay, great. Alrighty. I think we beat that one up, so.
We have direction.
Yeah, I think so. All right. So that was, uh, the last of the agenda items, so now we're off to, um, manager and staff reports.
I'm gonna check with my managers to see if there are any reports. So many meetings lately, and then we worked in here yesterday, so I don't know.
Um, just real quickly, we're having problems, I mean, building attendance, um, right now, so we have been looking for that, but just like, you know, we only have a lot of. For, um, opening.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So, that's, that's, we thought that might be a challenge.
Okay.
Well, we know people.
So we'll move on to Joan.
Oh, well, you heard everything we talked about tonight. Um, so I don't know how many of you are aware, but we did have the North County Vaccine Vaccination Clinic. I did volunteer at it, and for those of you that don't know, there is, there is a new outbreak. I think there were forty-six new outbreaks last week with six people that died the year, week before. It was thirty-seven outbreaks with another six people that died. I just read that today. Um, anyway, we did, we did do about four, over four hundred, about four hundred and fifty vaccinations, and some of them were, uh, I think there was a fourteen-year-old and a fifteen-year-old, so there were a few that are, that are younger. Um, and of course, this swearing-in ceremony for the interim chief was really cool. That was on the twenty-fourth. I was able to go. I hadn't been in the police department since, you know, since it very first opened. And, uh, and I don't even know that it had all the furniture at Ben, but you guys have done a really nice job.
Mark just got to use that too, because he was an old facility. It's all new for him too.
I know. It looks really good, and it's operating well, so I was really pleased about that. And finance committee meeting, uh, with Councilmember McCoy and with Reda and with Steve and I um, on the twenty-fourth, and we went over a lot of the stuff that, you know, that we talked about tonight and before. And of course, our budget workshop was on the twenty-sixth, so we spent, you know, the whole afternoon here. Oh, and most of the evening, as I recall. And then the courthouse tour, uh, some of you had courthouse tour on the twenty-sixth. Dwayne and I were supposed to go on the twenty-seventh, but Dwayne was absent. He was busy working, and then you had.
I had a psych day that I needed, I think.
Yeah, and then you had.
Mental health day, yes, thank you.
You had to, you gave a talk at the Patriots meeting. How'd that go? I should ask these ladies, how did that go? Good.
Thank you.
So he wouldn't come on the courthouse tour because he was working on it.
As Mark, Mark was my senior on that one.
That's cool. I'm sorry, I missed that. Um, and then, uh, and that same night, or is that, we can go back, there was women in business meeting at that, um, that evening too. And then, as you know, I've also spent multiple, multiple hours in meetings, um, talking to Randy Johnson, um, the hopefully possible interim city manager. Um, and then Bill Avery and Associates as well. Um, so I've been on the phone with them a lot, so it's been, it's been a busy, busy couple weeks. Oh, and also we met with Don Marie and Lorenzo, yes, over at, uh, over at the coffee shop. It was really good. I've got, I've got like four pages of notes from that meeting. They had some really good ideas.
Um, yeah, I'm gonna ask to have several agenda items put on. I'm gonna go ahead and ask you, Mr. Mayor, to direct the city manager to put these on. Um, the first one is gonna be a discussion, possible action item, fireworks prohibition. I had asked for that earlier, but when the city manager, and I had a second person to back it up, that said that they would support it. And when the city manager called that council person, um, the council person declined to back it up, I don't know why. But I'm gonna ask for that now. City manager said if I ask far enough in advance, that can be put on, because I know we're not supposed to put on our own pet projects. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you right now that this is not my pet project. I just, I don't know why we can't discuss it. If we need to take action, we'll take action. If we don't take action, we don't take action.
I agree. So we have the rest of the councils.
It doesn't matter what the council wants to do it or not. I'm asking.
I, I say we put it on this, this discussion.
Steve told me, as long as I get it to him early enough, he'll put it on. So.
I think it's something we need to discuss.
Um, I would like to ask, um, of, of the city manager and the incoming city manager, if we have items, because I, I've done it once, I've asked for an item to be moved up, and you did tonight, if we know that item, we want to move it up. Let's move it up now before we do the agenda. Let's go ahead and push it forward. We needed to move that up. Somebody said, so somebody could get out of here early. So.
And sometimes we do that.
Yeah. Well, let's try and make it a point to know in advance. Okay, so that I'm not asking, or Dwayne's not asking, or somebody else, make, make that a priority. Um, let's see. Um, I, I'd like to put on, also put on the agenda to formally talk about the sound system in here. We need to do something about it. The sound system, I'd like it as a formal agenda item. I, I'd like these all at our next meeting. I'd like that it's a formal agenda item, because we need to get going on that. Because you can, I, I have a problem hearing in here, and we have people complaining that they can't hear from home. We can talk about and kick the can down the road as long as we want, and.
Like I told you before. Um, Channel Four, this is our meeting here, was a week or so ago, a couple weeks ago. And yeah, that, we couldn't, I couldn't understand what was being said on that, so that's something we definitely need to address.
Yeah.
Um, do we want that on? I don't know, would we get it on the next agenda? Or do we want to make sure that we, or it's future agenda on that one? I'm just, I just want to make sure we have enough information.
Let's discuss about what we might want to do.
Okay. On direction.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking. And then I would like to, uh, this, I know we talked about this with, when Matt was here last time. Um, let, let's go ahead, and I'd like to get on the agenda, the bid process for the smaller footbridge at Greenhorn.
Oh, yes.
For egress and egress.
Yep.
And I don't want to wait till, uh, in the June or July or August to put it on the agenda. If, if it dies, because the other council members don't want it, then it dies. But I've done my diligence.
Perfect.
And it was a very nice swearing-in ceremony.
Yes.
We, we appreciate having you here. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
All right, cool.
Okay, my turn, yes. Um, so before I get into other stuff, so as we're talking about agenda items, is I do want to have brought before us, doesn't have to be the next meeting, a couple meetings away, is our shopping cart coordinates.
Yes.
This is getting delayed and delayed and delayed and put off, and have got to get this in place and executed, so I'd like to see the shopping cart coordinates.
And Corey, there are over a hundred out there again.
I saw, I might have saw the other day.
It was two hundred and seventy-seven last time. Now there's over a hundred again.
So that's, I would like to see that brought. It doesn't have to be the next meeting, but definitely in the next couple of meetings.
Let's, let's just set a time, so that way I can talk to Dawn and make sure that he has it prepared for us. If we're, our next meeting, it's June nine, or excuse me, June sixteen. Um, fifteen. Fifteen, I'm sorry, fifteen. No, no, then are we gonna be around on July sixth? So let's shoot for July sixth then. Okay, so I'll, I'll talk to Dawn about getting on July sixth agenda, okay? Perfect. Steve won't be here.
Where are you going?
He's all, he's out of here.
But you'll have a huge clown.
He does now.
He does now.
Uh, let's see what else we have to talk about. Uh, I just want to wish everybody out there in the community, uh, it's Pride Month, so wishing everybody, uh, happy pride, and then also, uh, swearing in was great. Welcome Mark into Back to the Force. I did get to tour, Back to the Force. Kind of is these days. The courthouse is, is amazing, so when everybody gets the citizens, get a chance to go see it when they open up, just go walk through it, it is just. I was, uh, taken away how beautiful it was and just, you don't feel like you're in Siski County, and just everything to the detail was just really nice, so.
But it wasn't over the top, that's what I.
No, but yeah, it was, it was secure and nice. It was, um, yeah, it was great, so.
I asked him if we could just borrow a corner.
Yeah, no kidding.
He said no. I won't be up there shoveling, so that's good. Um, that's it for me.
Thank you.
I'm gonna add to that. The only thing the courthouse is missing is a nice coffee kiosk in the lobby.
Can I go back one second? Actually, I told you back, I missed something I wrote down on. With our future meetings coming up with the homeless, I just want to encourage our citizens that are here tonight to pass along to your neighbors, your friends, everybody who lives in Warricka, because this is a big agenda item with the homeless that we are addressing, and this is your city, and this is your neighborhood that it could be placed in. And I just really encourage, and I like seeing the presence tonight, and I wish, I hope it picks up and any ideas you may have. So just please invite friends and family and everybody that lives here. Yeah. Oh, no, go ahead.
I was just looking for all, you said you have a lot of properties. I don't know where they are.
Yeah, we'll bring them forth. We'll bring them forth, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we could, I'm sure we could come up with something creative, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Well, I always say, bringing, you just said, if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. So if you got, people have good solutions, then come forward. If you want to just ditch and. You got, people have good solutions, then come forward. If you wanna just bitch and complain about things, I hear that all the time. So. We, we want people with solutions, not problems. We know what the problem is.
And the world is run by those who show up.
Yep.
Right?
Um, can I go back to your Fourth of July? You wanted to talk about fireworks and I assume that's for the city putting them on?
We don't.
No, 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 we're not putting them on.
Some citizens want it to be.
Correct.
So I just thought that, so Mr. Chief. And you guys, Eric, so we had on Terry Street, I had a neighbor of the street last year that had the, the ones that they let off at the barrens.
They're illegal.
They were on the street.
Yeah.
And they were on for three hours and I finally called like the, but I mean, it was just like raining down debris. It was going several blocks, several houses down. Bottle rockets going by my house. So I'm not, I'll be calling you.
Those are illegal until in Wyrick anyway.
Chief Lima's.
Those are illegal. You don't have to wait to call. First one goes up. Yeah. Chief, Chief Lima's did speak to us about the um. The fireworks. Uh, Jared, you wanna come down?
Well, I think he's gonna give us. I think, I think so we don't delay anymore. I think he's gonna probably give us a really good report on our next one.
Okay.
Beans, that's gonna be the topic.
So he talked about the illegal, the safe and sane ones that they sell that are safe.
Means it's gonna be a safe and sane.
Safe and sane.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. All right, Debbie, back to you before we skip yours.
Okay, Joan.
So I wanted to um reiterate what everybody else has said about the swearing in. Thank you, Mark, for stepping up to the plate. And it was a nice little ceremony. Um, I did go to the Cloud Mushroom Festival. There were no mushrooms there, but.
You have to sneak out in the height to see the mushrooms.
I was really impressed with how many vendors they have. They had a great show up of the vendors. Hotter than Blue Blazes. We did only stay about an hour and a half because of the, but it was very nice. Um, that morning, was it that morning? No, Monday morning, I went to um. The Memorial Day Celebration Service Celebration. That of those who came back at the Evergreen Cemetery Veterans Section. Uh, it was very nice. It very respectful with the tabs and everything. I encourage everyone to try to find it next year as well. And the courthouse tour was a treat because uh I'd have to leave crumbs to get, find my way out again or have a chip install or something, but. Um, it's humongous. I think they designed it really, really well. I like the accents of the wood. And it warms it up and it doesn't feel so cold and intimidating. So, but that's all.
Thank you. Well, I just wanna add, obviously the swearing in was, it's actually really cool just an aspect that uh Mark got sworn in by Callahan, which uh. Was sworn in, it's sworn you in twice now before.
Sworn in as an officer and a servant.
Yes. So this is the third time. So that was, is a huge moment on that aspect to be able, for him to be able to do that. It was just a proud moment, I think, on both parts. So I was really, really neat to see and just how hands on that Mark's been already. He's, he's out there. He's done so much already, just jumping in and filling those, filling some shoes that are hard to fill because this day and age, uh. Anybody involved in the police department has a big role and it's, it's a challenging role. He's, he's jumping right in there. He, you know, like I said, he. Come out there to the, went to the Patriots with me, um, give my little uh lecture on, on homelessness too and. And then we talked about law enforcement. Mark's just a plethora of information when it comes to the codes and everything else. He can just rattle off codes for. Days. It's amazing. You know, that part sells them. But uh, and then I'm, and uh, and we did our uh vaccination for the homeless. We did that uh last, was it Tuesday, I guess it was. Uh, we had vaccination. I think there was an upwards of around twenty individuals that got homeless that got vaccinated. Um, had behavioral health out there. We had a whole bunch of people out there helping out on that. It was, it was quite interesting. We handed out those shirts. Thank you, Don Marie. We handed off those shirts and handed all those out and everything. So that was well used to a lot of, a lot of individuals. So thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
And uh worked out really well. Um, at that moment, I think we'll just call this. During this meeting, we're gonna go and do closed session. So, thank you.